El tiempo ahora es 5:15 y llamaremos a esta reunión del Consejo de Trujeros de la Distrito de Transporte Avancado a orden. Comenzaremos con un momento de reflexión para todos los personas y las familias y los individuos que han sido parte de la historia de Vía y del Distrito de Transporte Avancado en buenos tiempos y en malos tiempos. Sr. Pitch, ¿se puede liderar el Plegio de la Allegancia?
Yo plego la allegancia para el Estado de Estados Unidos y para el honor de los ciudadanos. Un día, el individuo, el derecho de la justicia será.
¿Algún anuncio, Sr. Aron?
No, señor.
Eso nos lleva a la cuestión número tres, que es la agenda de consentimiento. ¿Tengo una petición por aprobación?
No se muevan.
Tengo una petición de Sr. Miller y una segunda por el jefe. ¿Todos están de acuerdo?
Ajá.
La petición pasa. ¿Hay algún briefing legal? No hay briefing legal. ¿Tengo una petición por adjuntamiento?
No se muevan.
Tengo una petición de Sr. Miller y una segunda de Catherine. Estamos adjuntos. El tiempo ahora es 5:16 y llamaremos a esta reunión del Consejo de Trujeros de la Metaropolitana de Vía a orden. Comenzaremos con el informe de nuestro presidente y CEO, Jeff Aron.
Antes de comenzar el informe, me gustaría pedirle a un ex miembro del Consejo de Trujeros, el jefe Bruseno, que venga adelante. Mary participó de su resignación efectivo ayer, pero le gustaría que se sentara frente a esta parte de la presentación. Gracias, Mary. Rick no se va a morder. He tenido la garantía de que no.
No puedo garantizar eso.
Bueno, esta noche es un evento histórico en la historia de Vía. Estamos teniendo nuestra primera reunión pública en esta fantástica instalación y en muchos sentidos representa la transformación de Vía que ha sido logrado por el Consejo de Trujeros. Tres de esos trujeros están dejando el Consejo esta noche. Henry Munoz, Rick Pitch y Mary Bruseno, en realidad, efectivamente, ayer. También son oficiales del Consejo. Han servido con distinción en el Consejo de Trujeros, con dedicación a mejorar el sistema de transporte en la zona de San Antonio. Esa dedicación ha sido infinita y extraordinaria. Bajo sus términos, hemos visto que Vía Primo se ha convertido en una realidad. Hemos visto la creación de asociaciones por la movilidad, la menor de las cuales es la contribución de la ATD de casi doscientos millones de dólares hacia mejoras en el 281 en 1604. Hemos visto el desarrollo de una red de transporte multimodal que conecta las ciudades subterráneas y los barrios a nuestras ciudades centrales y un sistema de carros de calle que luego vinculará todas las partes al centro y a través del centro. Hemos visto vehículos ambientalmente friendly comprados y colocados en servicio, la implementación de nuevos shelters de autobuses en la zona del centro y un compromiso de once millones de dólares para la expansión de los shelters en toda nuestra área de servicio. Y hemos visto que Vía se reconoce por la innovación y la efectividad operacional en los niveles locales, estatales, regionales y nacionales. La historia completa de la transformación de Vía es a menudo perdida en el ruido. Así que hemos preparado un video corto esta noche que estará publicado en nuestro sitio web y usado en toda la comunidad durante el próximo año que recoge nuestros logros y nuestros planes. Así que esta noche estamos revisando ese video informativo.
Muy cool, ¿no? Justo como yo. Este autobús representa el futuro de nuestra ciudad. ¡Increíble! Es tres palabras de progreso. ¡Oh, sí! Muchas cosas están sucediendo en San Antonio y el sistema de transporte de Vía es una gran parte de lo que está sucediendo. Es una transformación para nuestra ciudad, una ciudad en el ascenso. Nuestra ciudad está destinada a convertirse en una de las grandes ciudades de América del futuro. Nuestro futuro. Está sucediendo en San Antonio. Ya que estamos hablando del futuro, hablemos del increíble progreso que Vía está haciendo en nuestra ciudad ahora mismo. Como desarrollar un sistema integrado y conectado, nuevas tecnologías y hacer cosas buenas por el medio ambiente, Vía también está siendo reconocida por sus muchos logros. El futuro de la transportación de nuestras ciudades se está avanzando de una manera emocionante. Hay un plan de cinco años que conectará cada parte de San Antonio y que continuará transformándonos en una ciudad vibrante con transporte público excepcional. El plan aspira a desarrollar tres centros de transitar, una instalación de parque y ride, un moderno carro de calle y mejores entidades de alquiler del centro. Este plan proporcionará razones reales para que la gente salga de sus autos y estar en la Vía. Esto afecta a todos, no importa dónde vivas en San Antonio. Rutas convenientes y nuevos servicios como el moderno carro de calle y entidades como Wi-Fi onboard son todo parte del plan de Vía para llevarnos al futuro. Quiero invitarlos a tomar un pequeño viaje conmigo para que puedan mostrarles lo que ha estado pasando recientemente. Este es el nuevo centro médico, transito en el camino de la ruta Primo. Es bastante diseño, ¿no? Ahora, un año, el servicio Primo ha hecho un marco en la comunidad y incluso tiene un sistema de señal de prioridad para llegar más rápido. En un año, este increíble camino se ha extendido dos veces. Esto sucedió en un año. ¿Recuerdan lo que dije sobre el futuro sucediendo ahora mismo? Eso es correcto. No estoy en un set de películas futuristas. Estoy dentro de un autobús real y aquí tengo Wi-Fi. ¿Increíble o qué? Oh, y mira esto. Esta es la nueva aplicación de GoViaVia. Me puede dar llegadas reales de autobuses y horarios y incluso me puede decir cuándo llegará mi siguiente autobús. ¿Quieren saber qué hace esta aplicación aún más genial? Fue desarrollado localmente aquí en San Antonio. Este sitio web actualizado de Vía ha sido rediseñado y refreshado para que funcione en cualquier teléfono. Esa es la tecnología móvil para ustedes. Y hablando de tecnología rápida... Este es el nuevo sistema ViaEtherea. No más confundirse con los transfers difíciles de leer. La implementación de este sistema fácil de uso ha sido un gran éxito. Trabajo bien hecho, Vía. Vía también está haciendo San Antonio más verde y mejor. Mira el arco eléctrico. Una ciudad verde es una ciudad mejor. Gracias, Vía. Amo el centro. Es tan genial que puedes trabajar, vivir y jugar allí. Y con el nuevo moderno carro de calle, si quieres ir de tu oficina al centro para tomar un bate en Pearl o South Town, bueno, igual que en todas las otras ciudades modernas, no tendrás que entrar en tu auto o tratar de encontrar parque para hacerlo. Vía está actualmente trabajando en la ejecución preliminar de ingeniería y análisis ambiental del camino del sistema. En otras palabras, Vía está haciendo el futuro de esta gran ciudad una realidad. Hoy, cada gran ciudad tiene un gran sistema de transporte.
La nueva opción de Vía, la nueva capa de transporte que están trayendo, el moderno carro de calle, va a ser genial para el centro. No solo para aquellos de nosotros como yo que viven y trabajan en el centro, sino también para las personas que viven en otras partes de la ciudad y están visitando el centro.
La independencia realmente es importante para mí, así que la capacidad de ir a trabajar, la capacidad de conocer amigos, la capacidad de salir y relajarse es increíblemente importante y con Vía casi siempre en todas partes me permite hacer eso, lo cual es absolutamente increíble.
Y Vía lo está haciendo con resultados. ¿Qué tipo de resultados? Aquí están algunas de las logros de Vía para seguridad, innovación y excelencia ambiental. Para lograr todo esto requiere liderazgo, requiere visión, requiere participación y asociaciones en los niveles locales, estatales y nacionales. requiere una visión del futuro.
Nuestro objetivo para San Antonio para el año 2020 es construir una comunidad de poder cerebral que sea la ciudad más viva de los Estados Unidos y Vía tiene un gran papel en llevarnos allí. También estamos tratando de asegurar que nuestro núcleo urbano sea un lugar emocionante y vibrante donde estar y que nuestro núcleo urbano esté efectivamente conectado al lado norte, el lado sur, el lado oeste y el lado oeste. Vía ha sido tremendamente exitosa con su esfuerzo multimodal en el lado oeste y al invertir en infraestructura en el corredor 281 y en el Bosque Basí en el lado oeste en el Robert Thompson. Queremos conectar todo eso en el futuro para que, no importa dónde vives en la zona de San Antonio, sea fácil llegar.
Bueno, el plan de cinco años de Vía es un paso importante para San Antonio. Ha dado a la gente la oportunidad de usar el sistema de transporte público, particularmente si quieren vivir en un medio urbano en la ciudad central.
También tenemos la oportunidad de ser una ciudad en el ascenso porque está vinculado a la prosperidad y el desarrollo económico.
Cualquier gran ciudad o cualquier ciudad en el ascenso necesita un sistema de transporte que sirva a su ciudadanía y sirva bien. Y durante los últimos cinco, diez años, Vía realmente ha tomado esa misión en el corazón. Creo que el Vía Primo es un ejemplo claro de cómo realmente estamos expandiendo las oportunidades para las personas de todos los caminos de la vida.
Esta es una transformación de un nuevo San Antonio. Y, por supuesto, la Vía, estamos emocionados por ello. El carro de calle que viene y todo lo que está sucediendo ahora y es moderno, es para una gran ciudad. Así que realmente creo que San Antonio va a ser una de las ciudades de clase mundial y creo que el transporte es probablemente uno de los más importantes de todo.
En nombre de toda la comunidad de San Antonio, quiero agradecer al jefe Munoz y a todo el Consejo de Trujeros de Vía por el excelente trabajo que han hecho durante estos últimos años para hacernos una comunidad más multimodal.
Bueno, déjame expresar mi gran gracias al Consejo de Trujeros de Vía y al jefe Henry Munoz.
Gracias Consejo de Trujeros de Vía y gracias a Henry Munoz.
Gracias Consejo de Trujeros de Vía y gracias, Henry. Su trabajo ha sido notado por la comunidad y es top notch.
Solo queremos dar gracias al Consejo de Trujeros de Vía y queremos agradecer muy especial a nuestro jefe, Henry Munoz, por llevarnos hacia el futuro.
Gracias Consejo de Trujeros y gracias a Henry Munoz.
Es una nueva Vía.
Es una nueva Vía.
Es una nueva Vía porque Vía preocupa nuestras necesidades para el futuro.
Es una nueva Vía.
Es una nueva Vía.
Es una nueva Vía.
Una nueva Vía que va a llevarnos allí. Esta no es la misma compañía de autobuses de ayer. Es un nuevo sistema de transporte. La nueva Vía. Te veré en el futuro.
Ninguno de esto hubiera sido posible sin la liderazgo que se ha proporcionado este Consejo de Trujeros durante los últimos años. En última instancia, todo lo que hacemos es, sin embargo, servir mejor a nuestros viajeros, tanto existente como futuro. Y has oído de dos de los viajeros en el video y Priscilla, vamos a omitir, en realidad vamos a promover o vamos a premiar nuevos comerciales con esos dos viajeros. Vamos a omitir eso en el interés del tiempo porque tenemos un número de invitados aquí para hablar esta noche. Así que estamos contentos de tener a todos los que estaban tomando su descanso esta noche para tomar tiempo para abordar nuestro Consejo de Vía en este momento de transición. Y Priscilla va a presentar a cada persona que vaya al podium para hablar.
Buenas noches. Nuestro primer orador esta noche es nuestro ex presidente interrumpido, CEO, Sr. Roland Lozano.
Buenas noches. ¿Cómo están ustedes? El video dice todo. Lo primero que quiero ser capaz de decir es, déjame retroceder un poco en la historia habiendo tenido la oportunidad de venir aquí hace cinco años. En 2008, creo que Sr. Pitch, Sr. Bruseno, algunos de los miembros del Consejo de Trujeros hoy, Sr. Hill, Linda Chavez vieron una visión, una visión para cambiar esta agencia, para hacer eso y comenzaron a mover eso, a mover en esa dirección. El primer movimiento que hicieron fue elegir al jefe, Sr. Munoz, para liderar esa transformación. Y vieron lo que hicieron aquí hoy. Cinco años es lo que les llevó a hacer esto. La mayoría de los lugares tomarían diez, quince años para hacer esto, pero ustedes han trabajado duro para conseguir esto, básicamente cinco años, transformar esta compañía de autobuses. Era una buena compañía, una gran compañía, pero transferirla a esta entidad multimodal de transporte. Aplaudimos ustedes por eso y gracias por eso en nombre de los ciudadanos de San Antonio. Todos comenzaron de diferentes maneras, diferentes cosas sucedieron cuando llegamos aquí en 2009. El presidente tenía un paquete de esterminios, obtuvimos treinta y cinco millones de dólares, compramos un número de autobuses y los vieron aquí, los autobuses híbridos, los autobuses eléctricos. El sistema de ferrocarriles fue financiado a partir de eso que todos decidieron en términos de cómo hacemos eso. Pero comenzaron en las raíces de cómo hacemos las cosas. Creo que Sr. Pitch, en los años ochenta, setenta, Sr. Bruseno, estaban pidiendo hedging de combustible. Para que empezamos a ver las formas de poder, de cómo presuponer, cómo hacer cosas de una forma más técnica, de una forma más prudente. Comenzamos un programa en 2009 para hedging de combustible. Steve Land, el director de finanzas, tomó eso, lo condujo y lo implementé. Cuando entré en mi oficina, ellos dijeron, combustible, tres dólares y cuarenta y dos deberíamos comprarlo, deberíamos comprarlo. Steve, lo que sea, Steve, pero él lo tomó en el corazón, nos salvó durante los años, casi siete millones de dólares. Eso puede comprar muchos autobuses Primo, puede comprar muchos carros de calle, bueno, subways también en el futuro, carros de calle, enginees y autos. Pero ese fue el previsión que este Consejo tenía y poder llegar a esos tipos de cosas que conducen a la transformación que estamos aquí hoy. Helpó no solo ahorrar dinero, sino ayudó a Steve en presuponer y cómo avanzamos con el presupuesto de esto. Quiero ser capaz de decirles a todos y que todos tengan una agenda completa y no tomaré demasiado tiempo. Tengo la oportunidad de trabajar con la mayoría de ustedes como Consejo. Quiero agradecer a Rick y a Mary por toda la guía y ayuda que me dieron mientras estaba en Vía durante aproximadamente tres años y medio y les agradezco por su asistencia durante ese tiempo y les agradezco por, sé del trabajo duro que han puesto y los comités y todas las diferentes reuniones especiales y cosas que hicimos para que ustedes hagan lo que ustedes han hecho aquí hoy. Y a Sr. Munoz, quiero agradecerle por el tiempo que me han dado para ayudarme a ir y entender esta industria más, pero creo que lo que han hecho para esta agencia y cosas. Pero quiero ser capaz de decir una cosa, al menos en este video es una cosa, pero recuerdo que en 2009, cuando solía conducir a trabajar y venir a un anuncio en I-10 en Federal Red tenía a Henry Munoz diciéndome, es un nuevo día, San Antonio. Así es como llegaba a trabajar todos los días, escuchando, viendo a Henry diciéndome es un nuevo día. Y seguro que hoy, aquí estamos hoy y les agradezco a todos y les agradezco por lo que han hecho para esta comunidad y les agradezco por toda la ayuda que me han dado y les deseo que se vean y que sean mis amantes de amigos para siempre. Cualquier vez que pueda hacer algo por ustedes, por favor, déjenme saber.
Gracias, Roland.
Honorable.
¿Puedo tomar un segundo? Roland, no habríamos sido capaces de hacerlo sin usted y eran increíblemente importantes para nosotros. Supongo que están felices de que no tengan que tomar mis llamadas por la tarde más. Pero quiero decir una cosa que nunca obtendrán suficiente crédito. En la primera reunión en la que estuvimos, pregunté si podríamos ayudar a la congestión en el lado norte y encontraron una forma de conseguir que el Distrito de Transporte Avancado financie esa supercarretera allá afuera en el 281 Norte y la gente de San Antonio está mejor por ello. Pasó, continuamos para poder aprovechar más de un millón de dólares en construcción de carretera debido a esa acción y quiero que sepan cuánto apreciamos.
Nuestro próximo orador es el honorable Lethysia Vanderpuce, senador estatal, Distrito 26. Y acompañarla estará el honorable Ruth Jones McLendon, representante estatal de Distrito 120.
Gracias, señor jefe. Gracias a los miembros y a los grandes San Antonians que veo en este oficio. Como senadora estatal representando la mayoría de San Antonio, me ha dado la mayor de las alegrías trabajar con la liderazgo de Vía durante casi 23 años y junto con mi compañera hermana, Ruth Jones McLendon, hemos visto el crecimiento de nuestra comunidad. Siempre exponemos cómo San Antonio llega a la legislatura con una agenda centrada en uno y eso es mejorar la calidad de la vida para las personas que viven en nuestra comunidad. Vía ha sido una parte integral de hacer que San Antonio trabaje, gire y juegue mucho , mucho mejor. Con su liderazgo y el de este Consejo, sabemos que estamos en camino de convertirse en una ciudad de clase mundial y así es con mucho amor y mucho respeto hoy que presentamos estas resoluciones a tres individuos. Sr. Jefe, a usted, a Henry Munoz, a Rick Pitch, ahí están, justo aquí, y a nuestro querido amigo, Mary Bruseno, por su liderazgo durante muchos años, por su regalo de amor a esta ciudad, que es el regalo del tiempo y su experiencia. Y así que, por favor, permítanme leer esta proclamación. Se presentará a cada uno con sus nombres. Es el Senado Oficial del estado de Texas. Es contento de reconocer a Henry Munoz, Rick Pitch y Mary Bruseno, quienes retiran de su posición como miembro del Consejo de Trujeros de la Metropolitana de Vía y mientras han sido instrumentales en el crecimiento de la comunidad desde un modelo único de autobuses a una infraestructura de transporte multimodal innovadora que es conocida en todo el estado y el país por liderazgo, por servicio y por seguridad. Y mientras durante el curso de cargo con esta agencia, han sido notados por sus superiores habilidades organizativas, su conocimiento de problemas de transporte, capaces y creativos. Han lidiado con muchos deberes con un compromiso notable y efectivo. Y mientras un serviente público ejemplar, se considera inestimado no solo por sus compañeros y por la comunidad de la ciudad de Bear y la presencia en este Consejo de Vía Metropolitan Transit. Su presencia será mucha falta y sea proclamado que el estado de Texas aquí comenta a Henry Munoz, Rick Pitch y Mary Bruseno por su excelente servicio al pueblo de San Antonio y a la ciudad de Bear a través de su trabajo en el Consejo de Vía Metropolitan Transit. Y extendemos a ustedes grandes deseos por el continuo éxito y todos sus esfuerzos y sea proclamado que una copia de esta resolución y proclamación esté preparada como una expresión del alto respeto que tenemos por ustedes en el estado de Texas. Ruth y yo presentamos esto a ustedes con mucho amor y con mucho respeto para todo lo que hiciste para la gente de San Antonio. Gracias, Henry. Gracias, Rick. Gracias, Mary. Su servicio a esta comunidad se sentirá en la generación de mis hijos y en los nietos. Gracias.
He conocido a estas mujeres por tanto tiempo que cuando era un niño, Ruth Jones McLendon y yo, te verías a ella en el teléfono haciendo cosas suceder y tenía un apellido para ella, supongo que ella no recuerda, solía llamarla Ma Bell. Simplemente no tendríamos los recursos financieros para hacer lo que queríamos hacer en el futuro sin ustedes y nuestra delegación legislativa, así que quiero decirles gracias por ayudarnos a pasar esa legislación de vínculos. Fuimos uno de los pocos autoridades de transporte en los Estados Unidos que no tenían la capacidad de vincular nuestros ingresos, así que gracias por luchar en nuestro nombre.
Siguiente a hablar es el jefe de la ciudad de León Valley, el honorable Chris Riley.
Buenas noches. Felicidades a todo el Consejo de Vía por sus logros hasta el momento y muchos, muchos éxitos para el futuro, pero éxitos particulares y felicidades a los miembros del Consejo, Rick Pitch y Mary Bruseno y, por supuesto, el jefe outgoing, Henry Munoz, por su liderazgo y su visión en el Consejo de Vía. Sr. Pitch, creo que estábamos en el Consejo de Trujeros de MPO por apenas un poco y luego se fue, pero sé que su背景 en el negocio ha ayudado tremendamente en este Consejo. Mary, usted y yo hemos servido en el Consejo de MPO, incluyendo el comité ejecutivo durante muchos, muchos años y usted fue mi mentor. aprendí mucho de usted. Realmente aprecio todo lo que me enseñó y, ya saben, estaba pensando en eso, ¿cuál era la cosa más significativa que compartimos usted y yo? Y ese fue el concepto de calle administrada hace unos dos años, donde todos se mueven libre en una calle administrada excepto el vehículo único ocupante. Así que eso va a realmente, EMS y vehículos de alta ocupación. Si podemos cambiar esa forma de pensar en esta comunidad, va a hacer una tremenda diferencia en la congestión y la calidad del aire. Así que gracias por eso. Siempre recordaré usted por eso. Jefe Munoz, siempre he encontrado a usted muy gracia, persuasiva, cultura y clase. Gracias por designarme en el comité de asuntos intergubernamentales representando las ciudades suburbanas. No creo que tuviera mucho elegir, pero realmente, realmente me ha gustado estar en ese comité. Y luego fui capaz de también expandir mis horizontes al servir en el Consejo que entrevistó al lobby federal y eso fue una tremenda experiencia de aprendizaje en mi nombre y así gracias por darme esa oportunidad. La ciudad de León Valley es honrada y orgullosa de trabajar en asociación con Vía, especialmente con la extensión de Primo en León Valley. Nuestros ciudadanos ahora están conectados a UTSA. Oh, me gusta eso. Es el, ¿cómo se llama?, el tema rocoso. El centro médico y el centro del centro y esperamos que en el futuro cercano, un desarrollo orientado al transporte se producirá en propiedad vacía en León Valley que expandirá la vida de los viajeros en el Primo. Pero también tenemos el nuevo centro DPS en el camino Primo y muchas, muchas personas vienen a nuestra comunidad debido a eso, debido a la facilidad y rapidez de ser servido en ese centro. Así que estamos tan felices de que el Primo esté justo allí también. También quería tomar este momento para invitar a todos a nuestro 25º Anual Día de Living Day Earth this coming Saturday. El Vía Primo estará allí. Vía ha sido nuestro socio cada año, creo que hemos estado allí durante 25 años y estamos celebrando 25 años con una banda de Dallas llamada Vocal Trash y sé que ese es un nombre un poco inusual, pero tienen instrumentos reciclados y tienen un tema ambiental y como pueden ver en el video, Vía también tiene un tema ambiental, así que somos socio en ese aspecto. El autobús 88 viene justo en Ever's Road o puedes tomar el Primo y tendremos un servicio de taxi hasta el evento, así que solo quería poner a Pitch en eso y tengo un flyer. Esperamos continuar trabajando con Vía en proyectos de transporte futuros que beneficien a los ciudadanos de León Valley y la ciudad de Bear y quiero decirles nuevamente gracias al jefe Munoz, Rick Pitch y Mary Bruseno por su servicio y su dedicación. Los olvidaremos, pero sé que el nuevo Consejo entrará y continuará trabajando en esta visión y muchas gracias por darme esta oportunidad de hablar esta noche.
Gracias, jefe. El jefe Riley es en realidad un viajero de autobuses y fue la persona más persuasiva para convencer a Vía de que deberíamos extender el servicio Primo en León Valley, así que aprecio todo lo que hace todos los días.
Nuestro próximo orador es un ex miembro del Consejo y también ex CEO AFL-CIO ejecutivo, Linda Chavez Thompson.
Sr. Jefe, miembros del Consejo, dada la reputación que he construido durante los años, pensé que mi primera aparición aquí hablando de este lado del podium, que estaría pointando y levantando todo tipo de H-E-L-L, pero no hoy. Y quiero saludarte como mis antiguos miembros del Consejo y veo algunas nuevas caras y supongo que esos son tus nuevos miembros del Consejo. Felicidades por tus nuevos mandatos que has tenido. Sr. Jefe y a Mary y a Rick, tuve el placer de servir con ustedes en el Consejo de Vía durante los cuatro años que serví. No puedo decirles cuán emocionante fue volver a mi ciudad natal, la ciudad natal adoptada de San Antonio y empezar a ver las cosas que estaban sucediendo en Vía, pero estaba más emocionado y no podía ser más orgulloso de haber participado en algunos de los votos que fueron tomados, ya sea para el Primo, ya sea para el centro multimodal en el lado oeste, en el que estamos hoy y tantas otras cosas que no puedo empezar a decirles el orgullo que siento viendo el video, viendo cuántas personas están aquí para celebrar lo que has hecho. No puedo empezar a decirles. I can't begin to tell you how proud I am. Mr. Chairman, I can't thank you enough because it was your vision. I have known you since you were 10 years old, and I've often said, if anybody wants to know what he was doing at the age of 10, just ask. He may not want you to talk to me. But I want to tell you that right now, your mother and your father would be so proud of the things that you've accomplished, and more so, the legacy that you're leaving San Antonio on the issue of transportation and people getting to where they need to be and doing it with the kind of dignity and respect that VIA has always given, not just to the ridership of VIA, but to the employees of VIA. I can't thank you enough because you listened to the voices of the workers of VIA, you listened to the voices of management, you listened to the voices of the ridership, and for that, I want to thank you on a very personal basis. To Rick and to Mary, for your eight years of service to VIA, it takes a lot of dedication. It took a lot of meetings and meetings and meetings and meetings, and I think we kind of met ourselves coming and going when the chairman decided that he would appoint committees, and we all somehow ended up being on those committees. But I want to tell you very simply that I am seeing this beautiful building and what has been done, and on a very personal basis, I am looking forward to what you're going to do to the Robert Thompson Transit Station, and that that will also be a beautiful monument to the efforts of VIA and to each and every one of you that sit here. I congratulate you, and I leave you in good hands, or I left you in good hands, because Catherine Thompson Garcia, who is our Labor Representative on the board, is doing as good a job as I could have ever done. And I thank all of you, and I know that we all applaud your efforts and the future of VIA. Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you, Linda. Linda, I just want to say thank you for serving with us. You were an unwavering conscience for the most important people here at VIA, the people on the front line of the bus lines and the transportation system here. I think it is a new day at VIA. You're right, I've been on picket lines since I was about six years old, but this is the first time I've ever been picketed. Thank you for everything you do.
Our next speaker is the Honorable Paul Elizondo, Bear County Commissioner, Precinct Two.
It's an honor and a pleasure to be here. Welcome to Precinct Two. I used to shine shoes in this place when it was a railroad station, and that's a little while back. The presence of the Multimodal Center and the big presence of VIA in this community is extremely important. After all, this is where the majority of your ridership lives in this direction, and we want to extend it so that it's throughout the community as much as possible. I've always been an enthusiastic supporter of added, as we add transit amenities in Precinct Two. This evening, we're here to, in this historic landmark that VIA is turning into what was, it originally was meant to be a transportation hub. Yes, it was a railroad hub place, but it was also a transportation hub in the minds of some people. West Side Multimodal Transit Center, a transforming project that brings transit amenities here to the west side to our important people who support and make VIA a success possible, the people that pay the fares. And this is great to reach out to them, give them a comfortable place to transfer in their journey across the city, to work to the Bear County Hospital and to the other areas of the community. Sooner, I hope, sooner, very soon, we can see more light rail, and we see light rail straight to the airport, straight to USAA, in all those directions. In fact, I would like to see, put into, ask everyone to consider what David Smith, our county manager, says, you know, there should be a light rail going on outside of 1604 all the way from Highway 90 to I-35. And that's what VIA is looking forward and starting to do, because VIA is no longer a bus company. It's no longer just a bus company. There's other forms of travel. Transit Center here will encourage transit-oriented development in the area and serve as a gateway to the west side. We're going to do great things at Elmandorf Lake, together with the city. Mayor Castro has asked me to help him put together a construction of a resurfacing of the park at Elmandorf Lake, and we have groups of veterans that want to have a tribute to the people who served this nation and have been the, actually, the fountain of military might from San Antonio. Those kids from this particular area have had more people in the last two wars serving this country than from any other side of, and so we'd like to have VIA's cooperation in installing that. Now, I have here some dinner menus. Don't they look like dinner menus? These proclamations, which honor and, I'm not going to read three of them, okay? Because they're lengthy dissertations of what these wonderful people have done. And I'm just going to say that, I'm going to read the first sentence and save the last one for last. Whereas Mary Bruseno has dedicated herself to serving the public for many years of her life, and it goes on with the other things that you have done. And then it, you know, it's a proclamation from the legislature, I mean, from the, I'm in the wrong gig here. That was a long time ago. That was 30 years ago I was there. The court is honoring you with these proclamations and proclaiming at the end of these. The second one is where Rick, whereas Rick Pitch, is dedicated to bringing improvements to the public and private sectors of San Antonio and Bear County, and then it says all the other great things you have done. And then the last one says, same thing, where Henry Munoz has dedicated and performed extremely well on behalf of the public and on behalf of the responsibility that we asked him to take on, we, this community, asked him to take on several years ago, and has been a great performer there. Henry R. Munoz III has dedicated himself to serving the public in various roles and capacities. Now here's the end, at the end here, because I won't read all the "whereas's." It says, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of the County of Bear hereby recognizes and celebrates Mary Bruseno, Rick Pitch, and Henry Munoz III for their tenure, and, and Henry for his tenure as chairperson, and all of you for the service that you have given this community." And so this proclamation will be presented on behalf of the court, and this is a good part. You're going to like this. It's signed by the County Judge Nelson W. Wolf, Commissioner of Precinct One Sergio Rodriguez, Commissioner of Precinct Three Kevin Wolf, Paula Elizondo, Commissioner of Precinct Two, and Tommy Arkansas, Commissioner of Precinct Four. So I'm sure that this will be something that you can have and will be significant. So thank you for all the work you have done on behalf of a grateful populace of this county. You have done outstanding work for the people, and the details are on this proclamation. Now, over and beyond that, the Bear County Historical Commission has an honor that we give people who are outstanding. This is for, it's called Enidalo, and Enidalo is a noble man or a woman, a person of noble descent. It's a title of the style of the Enidalo was conferred by the decree of the Spanish king on the settlers from the Canary Islands who responded to the crown's appeal for people to come to the province of the New Philippines. Texas was known as the New Philippines in 1718. Today, by the order of the Commissioner of the County, Commissioners of the County of Bejar, it is conferred on those deemed worthy of so historic and exalted a title. And so this title of Enidalo indicts a person, makes him, designates a person as part of Bear County nobility. And it's with great honor that, and under the laws of the County of Bejar, with the rights of religious and immatriation pertaining to such office, it is an honor to present the title of Enidalo in the name of and by the authority of the County of Bejar. I confer on you the noble title of Enidalo. Henry Munoz, welcome to Bear County royalty.
My family would tell you that that happened a long time ago. Commissioner, I just want to say to you, from day one, you inspired the court to be a wonderful colleague and partner through that advanced transportation district, not only in the field of public transit, but in the field of transportation system. It really is your vigilance that has helped us to create a system. But most of all, I want to thank you for never failing to remind us that all of this is just about the people. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is the Honorable Shirley Gonzalez, City of San Antonio, City Councilman, District Five.
Well, thank you all, and especially thank you for this beautiful facility here in the heart of the west side. So many of us, our roots are from here. I know the Bruseno family was here many, many years, just here in Prospect Hill. Charlie Gonzalez and his family here many years, the San Miguel family also in Prospect Hill, and Paula Elizondo, all of us raised in this community. And to have this beautiful facility restored is really have been, what nearly brings me to tears. It's really the beginning of what we know is the complete development of this near west side. This building was the first, and of many to come, and I'm so grateful that it was done with such thoughtfulness and such care for this building and for the community. We know that District Five has the greatest number of VIA riders, and we know that as we continue as a transportation entity, that we'll continue to bring facilities like this to all the rest of our community. And I'm so grateful that you took such care in preserving it and restoring it, and on behalf of the entire District Five and the west side community, we thank you for all your service and for all your efforts. Very grateful, and thank you all.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Next is the Honorable Rebecca Villagrán, City of San Antonio, City Councilwoman, District Three.
Well, good evening, everyone. It is my honor to be here in front of all of you, and I have the great distinction of representing District Three, San Antonio, the south and the southeast side of San Antonio. And I wanted to take some time this evening to offer my thanks for you, Rick Pitch, and Mary Bruseno, and Chairman Munoz, for all of your work as part of the board with the VIA Metropolitan Transit. Your work for and in the community has been transformational for our community around this great city. Now specifically, as a representative of the south and the southeast side, I would like to thank you for working with the community and with Brooks City Base, and recently signing the Memorandum of Understanding to formalize the working relationship for the development of the Brooks Transit Center. This is an integral part and dynamic, integral part of the dynamic and robust growth that is occurring and happening on the south side of San Antonio. Now I remember sitting in one of these community input meetings before I was an elected official, and hearing the residents voice their excitement about this transit center coming, and knowing that it's going to be at the intersection of Sidney Brooks and South New Braunfels, because they could see the connection of downtown to Brooks, to Texas A&amp;M University, and beyond. And they're even more excited when we are able to extend South New Braunfels all the way to 410, hopefully in the near future. I want to thank you all for recognizing all parts of San Antonio are your patrons, need attention, and need that opportunity. Now, even though you will no longer be sitting in the positions that you are, I look forward to continue to work with you to develop these relationships throughout our community. Once again, thank you for your service and your commitment to our city. And at this moment, I'd like to bring up my council colleague, Councilwoman Gonzalez, up, and we'll present some certificates of appreciation from Mayor Castro. City of San Antonio hereby presents these certificates of appreciation to Henry R. Munoz III, Rick Pitch, and Mary Bruseno, in sincere appreciation for outstanding service to the community as a member of the VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Trustees, given this 20th day of February 2014. And witness thereto, we have hereunto affixed our signatures and the official seal of the City of San Antonio, Texas. Mayor Julian Castro, thank you very much.
Of course, the city sent women, because you're the ones who always get things done. And let me just say to both of you that in your districts reside two of the most important projects in the future to the citizens of San Antonio and to VIA, and that I trust both of you, working closely with our new board members, that you will do wonderful things and create transit-oriented development that benefits the citizens of each of your areas. Thank you all.
Our next speaker is the mayor from the City of Balconies Heights, the Honorable Suzanne DeLeon.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here, and I really appreciate the opportunity to personally and formally thank you. Balconies Heights has greatly benefited from VIA's best rapid transit and the VIA Primo service, and I applaud VIA, and especially you, Chairman Munoz, Rick Pitch, Mary Bruseno, for your service and for your leadership and to the community, to VIA and to the community. Over the years, VIA and Balconies Heights have shared a mutually important and a strategic partnership, and having VIA Primo in our community helps not only our citizens, but others who work and travel into and through our city. And as mayor of Balconies Heights, I have particularly appreciated Chairman Munoz, all the ongoing interest and the support, the willingness to explore a dynamic role in potential transit-oriented development in conjunction with Primo service in Balconies Heights. And we really appreciate the fact that we are a beneficiary of these improved transit services. I think our future looks great, and new and innovative transit is going to help San Antonio and its suburban cities to meet and overcome numerous challenges that are coming our way. And new and innovative transit-oriented development will contribute to San Antonio and its suburban cities' ongoing economic development into the years to come. So on behalf of the City of Balconies Heights, I wish each of you, the outgoing board members, all the best in your new endeavors, and I thank you for all of your support. I also look forward to working to the new board members and the new chair in the months and years ahead. So in closing, there's a quote that I think is very appropriate. "The things you do for yourself are gone when you are gone, but the things you do for others remain as your legacy." And Chairman, Rick, and Mary, you are definitely leaving a wonderful legacy to VIA and to San Antonio, and I thank you, and I give you many blessings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. What the mayor didn't tell you was that the City of Balconies Heights was in my office the day after I was sworn in to this position, and that you all worked very hard and were very patient with us as we worked through the difficult situation of coming up what is now VIA Primo, just celebrated its first birthday. And please express to the citizens of Balconies Heights... And please express to the citizens of Balconies Heights how thankful we are for your partnership in that very important project, which was voted one of the best BRTs, I think, in the United States. So, thank you.
Before we call up our representatives from two of our area chambers of commerce, our state representative Ruth Jones McLendon would like to say a few words to the board.
Roland, I have had some times together when I, when I served on the, on the, on the city council. And you know, I've had some times together with just about everybody up here. And especially with this one right here in front of me. Henry and I go back a very, very long way. I know I knew his mother, and his father, and little Henry, and we have had just a wonderful journey. And I am so pleased to know, and your parents would be pleased to know, that you brought up to be such a wonderful young man who cares about this city of San Antonio. And I'm just pleased to continue to be your friend. It's hard to imagine that Via was established way back in 1978, when Bear County's population was about half of what it is now. How far Via has come since then? With the service area covering 98% of the county and 49, almost million passenger trips provided in the year 2012, 13, it is clear that Bear County's residents need and use Via Metropolitan Transit. This transit system has worked hard to develop an innovative, effective, mass transit system. What started as a traditional bus service is now providing para-transit services for persons with disabilities, commuter van, port, vanpool services, and special event park and ride service. And we just completed the rodeo, and we experienced just what park and ride does and how effective it is for the citizens of this, of this city. Via really has responded to the need for dependable, convenient, and timely ways to move around town without being limited to the use of private vehicles. The general public, I think, will be, will be easy to find funding for these obvious needs, but as you know, it is not that simple. Funding and developing local transportation, as many of you know, I served on the state's transportation committee. And we have worked with Via over the years to provide for the needs, the transportation in this city. And I have been very pleased to have worked on that with them. I was particularly pleased when we were able to work on the ATD and Via legislation that helped to, that helped to obtain authority for Via and ATD to pledge certain funds and proceeds from the existing local tax and issue tax revenue bonds. That was something that I know that Via really wanted to do, and it was a pleasure to work with the members of the board and the staff, and for your lobby that you had up there in Austin pushing us on and telling us what you, what, 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 what you really needed. I want to congratulate Rick and Mary, and particularly Henry, for your perseverance and making sure that Via is number one in this state. But I believe you are number one in this whole nation, because I know from what you came, and I know where you're going. And you all have set a path for the other board members to follow, and I know that they are going to continue, because they have done a wonderful job so far. But I know they're going to continue to follow that path. So congratulations for your leadership, and thank you so much for just being you.
Thank you, representatives. Quite simply, we wouldn't have the transportation system that we have in San Antonio without Ruth Jones McLendon. We thank you.
San Antonio Chamber of Commerce President, Mr. Richard Betis.
Well, good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here today to address you all on this very momentous occasion. Chairman Munoz, Vice Chairman Pitch, and Secretary Briseño, congratulations on your tenure. And in fact, I'd like to congratulate all the members of this board, because although you all provided excellent leadership, you're three votes, and you need a whole bunch more to get things done. But you need to be able to provide the leadership and the vision necessary to get things done so that people can rally behind you and indeed execute on the plan. And so I can tell you, Chairman Munoz, and all the members of this board, that you all have provided that leadership. And how does that work? It works because you all are visionaries. You bring in new blood, and I think you started with Keith Parker, and you've got several new members here, and now with Jeff Arnt. You know, you've brought in experts, folks that knew how to get things done, to move us from a bus system to a multimodal transit agency. And that's where we're at, the new Via, a multimodal transit agency designed to move people in different modes from one place to the next efficiently, effectively, and with comfort and style. And that's what you've done here, Mr. Chairman. And I'm thrilled to be here to congratulate you for your leadership and to know that the new Via has begun. I think your, your young spokesperson said it very well. You know, he said all the great things that you all are doing. And I can tell you, it's a testament, again, to your leadership, to your sticking together, and to really going places with Via. So on behalf of the business community, I'd like to congratulate all of you, but in particular, Chairman Munoz, Vice Chairman Pitch, and Secretary Briseño, you all have really done it and done it well. So congratulations, and I look forward to seeing you in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard. You know, we've known each other a long time, and I have to say, having your voice on behalf of the business community is incredibly important to us, because we can't really do what we need to do without you all. So, thank you. Appreciate that.
The Hispanic Chamber of Commerce President, Mr. Ramiro Cabalzos.
I'm very honored to be here this evening with each of you. The great civil rights leader, Cesar Chavez, said, "We've seen the future, and we're not afraid of it." And I want to thank you, Chairman Munoz, for your leadership, for allowing us to see the future, and for embracing it, and not being afraid of it. You've been true to your family's humble roots, serving as chair. You have provided great vision for our city, and you've not asked for permission to do what's right. And I want to personally thank you on behalf of the San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce for your commitment to that future, that beautiful future that we have in San Antonio for our whole community. The business community is also very appreciative of your work, Rick. Thank you as vice chair for your leadership with our great San Antonio Spurs, of course, but also for your business acumen that you brought to this position as a volunteer, and for your tenure and your service. To Mary Briseño, thank you for your steadfast commitment to our community, more than close to 10 years of service in between other community roles you've held in our community, serving as the founding CEO of Free Trade Alliance here in San Antonio, and of course, teaching three courses during every week in the midst of your volunteer service. Twice, I've had the honor of working for your husband, Alex Briseño, once as Director of Economic Development, and last year at the chamber. And he tells me every day that you're the smarter of the two Briseños. And I want to just thank you for your tremendous service, and we look forward to his upcoming commitment. To all the trustees, you all have a position of importance, and we need your help as we move forward in our community to make sure that we stick to the five basic elements of economic development. We need water, we need energy, we need leadership, we need education. But the fifth element you all possess, and you'll be driving for the next 20, 30, 40 years, and it's transportation. And that's our quality of life. We're very humbled to be here tonight, and we're very thankful to your service, to you and Jeff, and the staff, and to the whole community. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you, Ramiro. Alex is right. Mary is the smarter one. And let me just, but I could tell you, if you want to come and work for Alex Briseño again, you can sit up here. Let me, let me say to you that you're a person who has, in many ways, accepted positions that are thankless, and that are about moving this community forward. And you probably will never get the gratitude that you deserve, but I want you to know that I know, and that we know, how hard you work for the benefit of the people of San Antonio, Bear County. We really appreciate it.
Our next speaker is former Via board member and NAACP representative, Mr. Oliver Hill.
Mr. Chairman, and board members, and Mr., where's the president?
There he is, right there.
Oh, and Mr. Arnt. Good evening to all of you. First, before I begin my real remarks, I would like to congratulate Rick and Mary for their steadfastness and their commitment and dedication to serve on this board for the length of time they had. And I want to congratulate all the new board members, because you have someone that you can look up to, to show that they were committed and dedicated to do the work of this community for the betterment of the organization, and also for the betterment of the community and the people in the community. But I am here to commend and thank Via for your commitment to working with small women and disadvantaged businesses, providing them the assistance necessary to do business with Via. Now, you have a new motto now, the new Via, but I think I recognized that new motto on last year, when Via entered a partnership with the NAACP, the San Antonio branch, to increase and promote African-American participation for the procurement of Via goods and services. As you may be already be aware, that small businesses have a difficult time in establishing themselves with a viable entity to do business with. And we want to congratulate you for the work you're doing in the community to provide opportunities for small businesses who are willing and able to provide goods and services to Via. As a former board member, I understand the time and effort and obligation that goes into this level of commitment. It's a lot of hard work, and to me, it was a lot of sleepless nights, because we didn't know what was going to happen the next day, because of some of the things that might happen in the community that were not pleasing to some of the folk. But I commend you, because the efforts you're doing now are sending a message you are sending to the community and to the transit industry. We are very proud in the NAACP to have formed this partnership with you on promoting business and supplier diversity. And I want to thank the board members and the president, Mr. Jeff Arnt, personally, and your staff, for the fine job you're doing and will continue to do in this community. We look forward to seeing the new logo, the new Via. We look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service to Via, Mr. Hill, and in particular, thank you for being here today to talk about something that may be the most important legacy of this board, which is the inclusion of small businesses located in San Antonio that create jobs. So, we appreciate your recognition of that hard work.
Next, representing CPS Energy is their executive vice president and chief delivery officer, Jalen Burley.
Mr. Chair in the Via Board, first want to thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. I want to say congratulations to the three outgoing board members. Mary, we've known each other for a long time, and I can say you are truly committed to this community, and it's no surprise that you sit here this evening and enjoy the accomplishments, because that is simply who you are. Rick, I don't know you as well, but I know that you are very, also very committed to this community, and so, again, thank you. And Henry, what can I say? I've known you for a very long time as well, and that's just it, no. We know that you're very committed to this community, and I want to thank all of you for your service on the Via Board. And to the rest of the Via Board members, congratulations on your accomplishments. Via has always been an early adopter in the many programs that CPS Energy has offered, ranging from windtricity to installation of solar panels on your transit centers, to the solar array that's on the Robert Thompson Center, fueling your all-electric buses, to alternative fuel choices for this community, always with the community first. And so for that, we are very lucky to have a transit system, a transit authority, that is so mindful and puts the community first. So on behalf of the Board of Trustees, on behalf of CPS Energy, I want to thank you for your accomplishments. We look forward to being your partner going forward in the future. Each of us, respectively, has goals toward 2020, to support air quality in this community, but we also know that it's with partners like you that we can be successful. So again, thank you, and congratulations again on your accomplishments.
Thank you, Jalen. I noticed that you're wearing green, and maybe that's for a reason. You know, I've watched, you and I have kind of grown up in the community together, and I've seen you assume this position of leadership, really, thanks to the mentorship of some of the people who are sitting in the audience who soon sit up here. And I wanted to say to you, thank you, and for you to express to the people at CPS, thanks to them for helping us to achieve one of our most important goals. In the first year that I became chairman, we said we wanted to be one of the greenest transit authorities in the country, and because of your spirit of partnership, we are, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is the former Tech dot district engineer, Mr. Mario Medina.
Board members, Mr. Chairman, appreciate the opportunity to be here and the invite. First off, I want to go ahead and let y'all know that I've been asked to represent Tech Dot here. First, Mario Jorge, or Mario Number Two, is not available today to come here, so he's asked me to join y'all and go ahead and say a few words. And I kind of warned him, you do realize I'm retired, I'm a free thinker now? Who knows what I could say? He says, "I have the utmost faith in you," so we'll see. First off, I want to go ahead and talk a little bit about transit priority lanes. A while back, a couple of years ago, we went ahead and Tech Dot came with this wild idea to figure out a way to go ahead and cost share on a very important project up on the North Side, along with 1604 on the West Side. So 281, 1604, we came and talked to y'all about, we had a concept called managed lanes. And Henry, because of your vision and leadership, we took those managed lanes and took it a notch higher. Transit priority lanes are really a true indication of what those lanes really do. Transit priority lanes are really a true indication of what those lanes really do. Transit first, transit free, high-octancy vehicles next, free, and then that single-octancy vehicle comes in and has to pay a toll. And we are able to go ahead and leverage that to go ahead and build additional infrastructure in the area, okay? That little concept and that plan that you all helped us with on the Tech Dot side to go ahead and put together has since grown and now it's at $825 million of transportation infrastructure that's coming to this, to this area over the next three years. And that is a major accomplishment and because of the leadership and the vision of this board and you all three up there, Rick, Mary, and Henry, you all have been able to go ahead and lay the foundation of what true seamless transportation system can become in this city. So, I want to thank y'all. It's an honor being here and I want to say, "Great job, guys." Great job. Thank you.
Well, you were the right Mario to be here anyway because you're really the guy that we worked with over the course of the last several years and we want to thank you for, you know, it hasn't always been the case that Tech Dot and VIA had a close working relationship, but you even let us steal one of your best people and we appreciate that. And I think we are well on the way to building a system for the future that no longer anticipates that you either get in your car or your truck or you ride a bus. And part of that is because of the work that you've done, Mario, so please convey to the people at Tech Dot how thankful we are to them for creating a partnership for the future.
Our next speaker is from the Amalgamated Transit Union, the ATU Vice President, Mr. Alfred Gomez.
Mr. Munoz, we'd like to thank you very much for all the great work and your vision in moving this company forward. We also would like to thank you and appreciate the VIA effort and working with the ATU for the benefit of all the workers here at VIA. We also like to say thank you because together we have, we have stabilized the retirement benefits of VIA employees during the rough time that we had and that thinking by working together, we could secure and improve employees, riders, and taxpayers. We're honored to work with you and we thank you for all your hard work and your dedication. And to Mr. Briseño and to the VIA Board of Trustees, we're looking forward to working with you folks in the future. Thank you very much, sir.
I'm a, I'm a union baby and so, if I hadn't done that, my dad would have found a way to kill me. I just want to say to the members of the union, thank you for always reminding us that every day, on every street of San Antonio, you're the people who are the face of VIA and I know that the next chairman feels the same way.
Our next speaker is one of our VIA trans customers, Ms. Shelley McMillan.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, just let me say it's an honor and a privilege to be speaking to you this evening on behalf of the Alamo Council of the Blind. I guess you're kind of blessed in a way because you don't have to listen to Larry Johnson's corny jokes tonight, you got me instead. But seriously, you know, public transportation is extremely valuable and important to persons with disabilities because without it, many of us would just stay at home and feel sorry for ourselves. We wouldn't have much, we really wouldn't have much of a choice without VIA trans service unless we would have to rely on friends or family members for rides or we would have to pay a lot of money. Who can afford those expensive, long cab rides? Not me. You know, because of accessible transportation, people with disabilities can go to work, to school, to doctor's appointments, and the neatest part is that we can go shop at the mall and spend money. We can travel freely with assurance and with the dignity and respect that we deserve. So, it is our key to social and economic independence. And because many of the fixed bus routes are inaccessible or unfamiliar to many of us, we have to rely on VIA trans paratrendant system instead to go about our daily lives. For this, we are extremely grateful. No, the system is not perfect, but it has gotten so much better. We have come such a long way. I know I started coming to these board meetings about 12 years ago and there's the improvements, absolutely, it just blows my mind when I really think about it. I just want to point out some of the excellent recent improvements that we have because of our work together. We have automated notification system, we have door-to-door service, not just at the point of origin, but also at the destination for those passengers who need that assistance. the sensitivity training for van operators and I've had a lot of the operators share with me that the training really helped them a lot in learning how to help each individual. We also now have the same-day request taxi subsidy program. But I just want to say that all of these fantastic things have happened because of our successful dialogue between organizations like the Alamo Council of the Blind, of which I am the first Vice President, and the members of the VIA Board of Trustees and senior management. There is, of course, there's always more work to do, but our conversations with VIA will continue, we know. And I think it's both fitting and appropriate on this momentous occasion that we publicly acknowledge the progress that has been made and the important contributions to the progress by outgoing Board Chairman, Henry Munoz, and to Board Members, Rick Pitts and Mary Briseño. Now, Mary, along with Board Member Bill Martin, they both took our challenge and they agreed to take a ride on a VIA van under blindfold in order to experience what we experience every day. Thank you, Mary, Rick, and Henry, for your dedication, your empathy, and your tremendous support to expand opportunities for individual travel for individuals with disabilities in San Antonio and Bear County. And I would just for a moment like to address people in this room who have disabilities, who come to these board meetings and speak up. Please understand that, yes, there is work to be done, but more importantly, please think about the fact that this board, this VIA board, they are in our corner. They do have our interest at heart. So, when we speak about things, let's try to think about the positive things, not just the negative, and to think of the glass as being half-full as opposed to being half-empty. Thank you so much and God bless you all.
Thank you, Shelley, and you're right, like Ramino was right. This is one of those moments where Mary Briseño deserves a great deal of credit for putting herself in a leadership position for helping to create progress and to create change and we are very proud of her and very proud of the progress that we've been able to attain. And, you know, sitting up here month after month, it's not always easy to listen to what needs to happen, but we want each of you to know how much we appreciate the fact that you take the time to be here and to talk to us. It's that spirit of interaction that has helped to create change and we thank you.
Our closing remarks with VIA President CEO, Mr. Jeff Arndt. We have a brief via message from former VIA President CEO, Mr. Keith Parker.
Thank you. Chairman Henry Munoz, Rick Pitts, America Senor, thank you. Thank you for hiring me as President and CEO of VIA in 2009. Thank you for setting a vision that would help transform VIA from a bus-only to a truly multimodal transit system. Thank you for demanding excellence and accepting nothing less. Thank you for supporting the missions that help VIA enjoy some of the highest ridership increases while maintaining some of the lowest costs in the nation. Thank you for providing me the resources needed to establish the agency as the best in Texas, year after year. Thank you for supporting changes that led to VIA winning the Apogeo Award for Safety Excellence. Thank you for your acumen and relationships that would help VIA secure unprecedented levels of funding from local, state, and federal partners. Thank you for your commitment to the environment that translated into the purchase of CNG, electric, and hybrid vehicles. Thank you for supporting Jeff Arndt as my deputy and then later hiring him as your CEO. Most importantly, thank you for embracing my family and introducing us to so many wonderful people in San Antonio. As your tenure comes to an end on the VIA board, please know that your contributions are truly appreciated and will not be forgotten. In short, thank you.
Well, he did get one thing right there. Think about it. Before I make my own remarks, I want to read in the record because it's been requested that I do so, a letter that I received. Dear Mr. Arndt, thank you for partnering with the University of Texas at San Antonio to provide excellent and quality public transportation to our students. In this day of increasing costs, students seek out economical modes of transportation. Today's average UTSA Roadrunner is a much younger student, is not from San Antonio, and does not always have access to a car. We have a deep appreciation for your willingness to help address our student concerns and needs. I understand this evening is the final meeting of the VIA Board of Trustees for three of the board members, Chairman Henry R. Munoz III, Vice Chair Rick Pitts, and Secretary Mary Briseño. Congratulations to these three board members on their outstanding service to VIA, to our community, and to our many students who benefit from public transportation. Over the past five years, VIA has taken bold steps to move San Antonio forward. We are fortunate that VIA is building the West Side Multimodal Transit Center near our UTSA downtown campus. We are also pleased with that the planned streetcar circular system will connect our downtown campus with all the major activity centers in the central business district. The start of VIA Primo Bus Rapid Transit Service has also been a major benefit to our students. You have partnered, partnered with us by providing reliable service on bus routes 93 and 94 to connect our UTSA downtown campus with the main campus. On Saturdays when UTSA hosts home football games in the Alamo Dome, you work with us to provide excellent and affordable service to our students. For all of these efforts, we are grateful that you keep college students in mind as you advance the needs of public transportation. To Henry, Rick, and Mary, a big UTSA Roadrunner, thank you. Your time, energy, care, and service to our community and to our students will always be remembered. Congratulations on a job well done. Sincerely, Ricardo Romo, President, UTSA. And now it's my turn and I'm going to take one by one, so I'd like Mary to come join me for a second. You know, I'm kind of reminded of the parents that go to Italy on vacation and when they come home, the kids get a T-shirt that said, "My parents went to Italy and I got this T-shirt." Because after eight years of service, we have a plaque, which is just a step up perhaps from a T-shirt and very little to reward you for all your work. But before I hand you the plaque, I'd like to say a couple remarks on Mary very quickly. First of all, there is no greater champion for VIA and for the integrity of this organization than Mary Briseño. And I had asked for a list of committees that board members had served on, and I'm not going to read you the whole list, but I'm going to read you a really relevant part of the list. The Ad-Hoc President and CEO Selection Committee Chair, the Ad-Hoc Nominating Committee, the Ad-Hoc Accessible Transit Advisory Committee, the Ad-Hoc Real Estate Purchase and Development Advisory Committee, the Ad-Hoc Personnel Committee Chair, the Ad-Hoc 30th Anniversary Committee, the VIA Trans Appeal Committee, the MPO Transportation Policy Board, the Lone Star Rail District Board of Directors. I mean, this is, these are all ad hoc assignments on the top of the fact that Mary has chaired every major committee and has served on our executive committee, tirelessly working for this agency. And so, we, we just cannot thank you enough. So, I'll give you this plaque as a small remembrance. "We honor Mary Briseño for her dedicated service to the citizens of Bear County as a member of the VIA Board of Trustees, February 2006 through December 2013." Thank you so much, Mary. Okay, so first of all, Rick has taught us a, Rick brings, obviously, the business acumen to the table and you heard about fuel hedging, et cetera. I think the first thing that Rick taught me when I got here is what, what, what an appropriate budgeting process was and we hope you were pleased that we learned your lessons. And the second thing he taught me is brevity is probably next to godliness as opposed to cleanliness, brevity. And we have, Steve is...
That's just the number one.
Yeah, right. Steve Lange is over here in the corner and he's, he's learning that lesson daily. So, I want to thank you. I'm not going to read the words because you would say you already know what it says, but I do want to let you know that we do this with the same amount of gratitude, thankfulness, respect, and admiration for your service. Thank you, Rick. Stay standing. Okay, now, I'm going to say this because I mean it with all great intent. Growing up, most of us, I think, have seen Reader's Digest and I guess they still publish, but there was always a section in Reader's Digest about the most unforgettable character I ever met. I know that can be taken a number of ways and it probably should be, but Henry, you are definitely one of the most unforgettable people I have ever met. I want everyone here to know that no one put in the hours, put in the effort, the way that Henry has and for which he has never received any compensation, he's never accepted any compensation, he never sits at a table that VIA sponsors. He simply served the community and what a great thing. Certainly a creative strategic mind, I want to make sure I don't forget any of my notes. Henry certainly set the bar high, I think Keith's comment was absolutely true. He has a kind of energy that I wish I'd had when I was 20. And he was kind enough to tell me that he, I'm not as old, I don't look as old as I am, that I really appreciate that greatly. And so, what we have for you, hold on a second. From the Board of Trustees honoring Henry Munoz, "In recognition of your extraordinary leadership, your service and commitment has yielded an enduring legacy of change while serving the greater good of our community." I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. You'll notice that I did not give him a weapon until his last day.
I'm going to use that at my office.
We're moving quickly through the President's Report. If I could have the board members join me up front here, you know, several people have remarked on the beauty of this building. I remember Roland, who, Roland on my first day here, and Roland gave me the greatest orientation. I always, always appreciate that man. He brought me by this building, it was still the savings, the savings and loan or the credit union, I'm sorry, and he said, "VIA owns that building." And I was like, "Really? VIA owns this building?" It's a beautiful building. It is so beautiful that within six months, my office is going to be right up there in the corner. We are going to move our executive management team to this building as part of our commitment to this community and I couldn't ask, actually, I'm sorry, that will be my office with the windows closed, but there is a beautiful stained glass window in there as well. So, in any case, we, we are now would like to dedicate, this is the first public function we've had, and we would like to dedicate this building. And so, Henry, if you would read the...
The West Side Multimodal Transit Center, the International and Great Northern Railroad Depot, dedicated February 25th, 2014 by the VIA Metropolitan Transit Board of Trustees to the citizens of San Antonio and Bear County. The Depot Building for the International The Depot Building for the International and Great Northern Railroad was constructed in 1907, incorporating different architectural styles to produce a unique and magnificent edifice. The Depot served rail travelers for many years before falling into disrepair in the latter part of the 20th century. The building was later renovated by Generations Federal Credit Union, and then it was bought by VIA Metropolitan Transit in 2011 to be restored to its original purpose as a transit facility. Now, this building is dedicated to the people of San Antonio and Bear County, representing a new direction for VIA Metropolitan Transit towards a truly regional and multimodal transportation system. The VIA Metropolitan Transit Board of Trustees. All of us. There has been so much talking tonight, but I will say one more thing before we get into the very short business meeting of VIA this evening. Over the last few weeks, as I've known that this part of my life was coming to a close, I've been asked, and I've asked myself, "Why did I do this?" And I remembered, and there's a whole row of my family, my tias and my tios, sitting there, about my grandmother, Doña Julia Molina. She never got a driver's license. She used to get to my house at 1022 O'Blade Drive on a VIA bus. She got to Bingo on a VIA bus. And she used to tell me a story about this building, about the Indian that used to sit at the top of the building. She said, "You know, mijo, every morning and every evening, they take that Indian down so he can take a pee." You know, what that really means is that this building and this institution is such an important part of the lives of people, always has been, and it will be in the future whether they ride a bus, or ride Primo, and a streetcar, or light rail. It's always going to be important, and it's important in the lives of people like my grandmother. And I think that's why this Board of Trustees, those of us who have been here before, and those of us who'll come in the future, have been honored to serve as volunteers. So, I just want to end this term with a recognition that it's really about you and about all of the people that we've worked with, and the people that we pass on the streets every day who are sitting at bus stops and in those buses that this is about. And we thank you for your patience, and we thank you for your service to our community, and it has been an honor to work with each and every one of you. And I think it's appropriate. I never really thought about it until I sat here this evening and saw this wonderful stained glass window of the earliest settlers of our community looking toward the future. This building has always stood for looking toward the future, and we thank you.
And that ends the President/CEO Report.
Citizens to be Heard.
I believe we have three citizens to be heard, and Gloria, if you'll call up the first name, please.
I think it's mighty strange when the citizens to be heard, they give us three minutes, and other people talk five, 10, 15, and 20 minutes. So, VIA, shame on you, but that's okay. I will be here at the next meeting, and the next meeting, and the next meeting, and the next meeting. I've been coming over here 30 years and not tired yet. Your Primo fare box is a joke. You want the thing for the scan, after the time it don't scan. People overpay VIA. VIA don't give them nothing to get their money back. This man was short of four pennies. The bus sit there 10 minutes, he didn't have any more money, so finally this lady got up and put four cents in the fare box, and VIA overcharging the people and won't give them their money back. The VIA trans lady pays $3 because she don't have, she don't have $1.95, so she had to pay $3. She supposed to get back $1.05. She don't get that back. VIA is overcharging the people. The sidewalks in the downtown is filthy. The Primo bus is a joke. That Primo bus go down Hevna, no streetlights. It goes down Banderas, no streetlights. Leon Valley. When that bus go down Hevna and turn on Banderas, it's a bad dip. That's what's tearing up the buses, that's why your buses keep on rallying and shaking. And it's so, it's so bad that I was on the back of the bus one day, and the bus was just bouncing up and down, my heart was going boom, boom, boom. And I said, "Bus driver." He said, "What's the matter, Mr. Hodge?" I said, "I'm about to have a massive heart attack." He said, "Sir, please don't have no heart attack. Come up here and sit with me. We know that these buses are worth a dime." And then my heart started beating regular again. Those Primo buses is a joke. The streetcar map is outdated. Crossroads parking lot, the restrooms are filthy. They need to build another parking lot there. Downtown sidewalks are filthy. And there's just many other things I don't have time to talk about because I can't hardly see, I can't hardly see this writing because it's kind of dark. Y'all are a legacy in San Antonio, Texas. I started riding the bus 30 years ago, no, longer than that. I was about five years old, and I said, "Mama, why come we have to go to the back of the bus?" They said, "Junior, don't worry about it. It's a long story." And so, we have came a long ways with far discrimination. Discrimination still exists. When you go to the bus stop, people just sit there where you can't sit down because you're black, no respect for your elders, and many other things. But I just shake it off. You know, I just shake it off and keep on moving. So, there's still a lot of discrimination that's going on here in San Antonio. And VIA, y'all have did an outstanding job, and y'all will be doing more. And it's dark now, but anyway, I still will be coming to the meetings voicing my opinion on the bus service that is not 100% like it should be, and I'm not happy over people being overcharged, and y'all need to be fined $30 million for overcharging the people of San Antonio, Texas. Y'all have a good night.
Yes, my name is Laurie Zertucci. I just have questions. Is this new center, does that mean that y'all aren't going to have the VIA board meetings at the San Pedro location at 1021? And the buses that come to this centralized location, does that mean if we catch the buses, like say, from our homes or from the store, they'll go through downtown, but they won't stop anymore downtown? They'll just come here? And I still think VIA needs to improve on routing because there was an individual where I work, he works on Roosevelt. He came here on a separate van, and I came here on a separate van, and I work on Eads. And my van still wound up at Roosevelt, picking up somebody living on the south side, when I could have rode with this other person that came here from Roosevelt, the Roosevelt location, because I work at the Eads location at the lighthouse. So, they still need to improve on routing when people are going to the same destination and they're not that far apart. And that's the only questions I have is, are the workshops and the VIA board meetings are going to be here from now on, or are they going to be at the San Pedro location? And can we still take buses downtown and get off downtown, or they are going to be at this other location? That's it.
Our next citizen to be heard is Manuel Niara Garcia.
Hello. I'm only been satisfied, on December 2012, I'm only been satisfied with the Primo, but unfortunately, that bus is supposed to get there every weekday, every weekday for every 10 minutes, and also on the weekend, every 15 minutes. However, I've been going towards downtown and also, and also towards the HAB, but however, however, because there's still many other, or required people, and even though I was trying to adjust to get to the exit, but however, however, there's also, however, there's also the reason for what would happen if there were any kind of future accident, which it would be for the streetcar, I'm not sure.
Damon Mason.
VIA trustees, they cite his, this item Mason. I'll hide the plant across your response to CAF number 354,238 along with the March 6, 2014 public meeting about the streetcar. When I brought in the money pack, and that's been relopeced last month, I did that for a reason, and for a certain response on your part. My objective is to get across that there is no excuse for you to have made a 31-day pass the way you did, none. You didn't go on to state how CAF smart card is online, my account manager defines it as the second, E-Fair second base. I could care less. I could really, really, really care less. That's not something to celebrate. There are people that do not have internet access. Even if it were not an issue, why would anybody be brained by a smart card that could run out of cash right when he is in a bad part of town with no cash? I could purchase either the money pack or the relopec with that to $5. Either make 31-day pass at this par, or give everybody a retroactive $1 rebate and charge only $5 from this point forward. Bring that concrete at durable finance media, so can that spin. There's no reason why VIA cannot do the same. After your modern streetcar public hearing, I can address that in a hurry right now. First, where do you plan to get electricity to power this overgrown tinker toy? CBSN would likely have to burn more fuel and escalate the electric rates for everybody. Next, how is, how exactly is VIA planning to pay for this streetcar after the Federal Reserve has finished crashing the US dollar? What about, what about when China's allies have done isolating the United States away from the global economy with trade embargoes, not unlike what was done to Cuba? Some hefty food for thought.
That concludes our citizens to be heard.
Item number six, Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion for approval? I have a motion by Mr. Lee and a second by Mr. Miller. All in favor? The time is now 6:56, and the VIA Metropolitan Transit Board of Trustees will officially go into a closed executive session. The items we will discuss during this executive session are as follows. Item number 7A, 7B, and 7C, entitled Legal Briefing, VIA City of San Antonio Agreement Regarding Streetcar Portion of VIA Smart Move Program. B, Discussion and Possible Action on the Status of the Following Litigation Regarding VIA Metropolitan Advanced Transportation at All, Cause Number D-1-GN-13-004230 in the District Court of Travis County, Texas, 126 Judicial District, and C, Texas Open Records Open Meeting Act Training and Requirements, which are executive session items pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled Consultation with Attorney. All persons who are authorized to attend the executive session, please proceed to the small conference room. The time is now 7:45, and we are officially coming out of a closed executive session regarding Agenda Items 7A, 7B, and 7C. No deliberations of public policy or vote-taking occurred during the executive session. That brings us to item number eight. A report of the nominating committee. Mr. Pitch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The current Board of Directors' officer terms have expired, and as required by our bylaws, a nominating committee was appointed to recommend a new slate of officers. Specifically, Gerald Leav, Steve Allison, and I were appointed by the executive committee as members of the nominating committee. The nominating committee then subsequently appointed me as chair of that committee. The committee's first job was to review all the individuals who showed interest in serving as an officer, and we'd like to take a moment to thank all of those who expressed interest in serving. After obtaining input from members of the committee, the nominating committee met, I guess, three times in total. Are you interested in meeting a fourth time, or do you think we're still good to go? Okay, so, so after our third meeting, we came to a consensus, and we would like to recommend the following slate of officers. As chairman, Alex Brusino. As vice chairman, Doug Ponick. And as secretary, Lou Miller.
Do I have a, go ahead, I'm sorry.
If this slate of officers is approved, it will serve until December 31, 2014. Before any action on our recommendation can take place, we're required to ask if there are any other nominations from the floor.
Are there any nominations on the floor, from the floor? Do I have a motion, Dr. Gambetta?
I move that the board accept the report and adopt the entire recommended slate of candidates.
I have a motion, and I have a second by Mr. Miller. All in favor? Whereas the position of officer of VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Trustees requires that the officer endeavor to be a regional leader. Okay, come on up. Mr. Miller, Mr. Ponick, and Mr. Bruseno. Let me do this, I don't want to get this wrong. Congradolences, Alex. Okay, whereas the position of officer of the VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Trustees. Whereas the position of officer of the VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Trustees requires that the officer endeavor to be a regional leader in transportation and a partner in advancing regional transit. Whereas the position of officer of VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Trustees requires that the officer perform the duties of an officer for the benefit in the public interest at large and the public transportation patrons in particular. Whereas the position of officer of the VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Trustees requires that the officer perform the duties of an officer without discrimination against nor preference for any individual, business, or entity. Whereas the officer has revered that he will faithfully execute the duties of an officer of the VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Trustees. I want to thank these officers, Doug Ponik, Lou Miller, and Alex Brucena, for their commitment to the VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Trustees for promoting transportation through their service. Raise your right hand. I--
Aye.
--do solemnly swear--
Solemnly swear.
--that I will faithfully--
That I will faithfully.
--execute the duties--
Execute the duties.
--of an officer--
Of an officer.
--of the VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Trustees.
VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Trustees.
And will, to the best of my ability--
And will, to the best of my ability--
--preserve--
Preserve.
--protect--
Protect.
--and defend the Constitution--
And defend the Constitution.
--and laws--
And laws.
--of the United States--
United States.
--and of this state. So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Hey, Alex. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So move.
I have a motion by Ms. Thompson Garcia and a second by Mr. Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
If I may have your attention, before we lose Henry, we've got a multimodal vehicle in the east, because it really is multimodal, and this is presented in recognition of the new VIA.
Congratulations.